All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Tuesday, May 17th at 6:07 PM. Could I have a roll call vote?
Chad Sexton-Duranian, present.
Veronica Talcott, present. If you could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting has been recorded. It will be on Zoom after the fact, and it is on Channel 9 Live. For chairman's additions or durations. I have none.
Chad's 11. I do not.
All right, before we start the public comment period, I would like to first welcome our new town administrator, Eric Sylego, our administrative assistant Sabrina Moore, who is here with us today. And also thank Ross for his continued support of the selectmen's office. So now, are there any public comments? I see a raised hand.
Yeah, I just need to announce that I arrived late. This is Teresa.
Oh, thank you. So you're attending, okay.
Yeah, I have to attend remotely today.
Is there a comment from, I see a raised hand off to the side with no square.
That's my cursor.
Oh, that's your cursor. You have a raised hand person. Okay, any comments from the public in attendance here? All right, thank you. Moving on, reviewing meeting minutes. The meeting minutes were available, are available in the SharePoint. For last week's meeting, May 11. Teresa, were you able to make all the updates you wanted to make?
Yes, the meeting minutes are ready for approval.
So they're in the SharePoint?
And I also renamed them, so they're just listed as May 11.
Thank you.
I haven't had a chance to review them. I didn't realize they were in there.
Okay, so do you want to?
Rather wait until the next time.
All right, then, let's move the meeting minutes for 5/11 to the 5/31 meeting for approval. Do you want to make a motion for that? Or we could just do one?
No, we can.
Oh, do you want me to do it?
No, I think, I think we can just move it to the next agenda, Teresa, if that's okay with you.
Okay, yep, that's fine.
All right, so we're moving 5/11 to 5/31 for approval.
Right.
All right, so no minutes. We have no appointments or hearings today, but we do have appointments of personnel and officials. So the first is Justa Mayo as Police Records Clerk. And in the SharePoint, there was the information that Chief Sartell forwarded us. And Lieutenant Peach is here with us if there are any questions. So Chad or Teresa, either of you have questions for the lieutenant?
I don't.
All right, then, is there a motion please?
Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Jessica D'Amio as Police Records Clerk effective 6/20/22, contingent upon a quarry check and a pre-employment physical with a one-year probationary period.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Because Teresa is remote, we'll do a roll call vote. Chad's?
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Veronica Peach, yes. All right, thank you, Lieutenant Peach. And welcome, Justa Mayo and Jim. We also had appointments from the, let me just get to this on SharePoint. We had appointments from Cemetery and Parks for intermittent season laborers in the Cemetery and Parks Department. These are appointments that happen every summer. So we were requested to appoint three persons, Riley Johnson, Michael Murray, and Robert Sigmund. And is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Riley Johnson, Michael Murray, and Robert Sigmund as part-time intermittent season laborers in the Cemetery and Parks Department, contingent upon a quarry check and a pre-employment physical with a one-year probationary period.
Is there a second?
Second?
Teresa Moore, second? Okay, any further discussion?
No, I just apologize that it takes me so long to get off the mute and I made Chad ask to do the motions for me. I'm on like some secret double mute here.
Well, I'll leave an invoice in your mailbox.
All right, any, any discussion, any questions?
Nope.
So roll call vote, Teresa.
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Talcott, yes. All right, thank you. All right, I have appoint Chief Procurement Officer here, and nothing else there. So for discussion first, Eric Sylego is our town administrator. Currently, Ross is our, no longer interim town administrator, now town administrator consultant. And he is still our Chief Procurement Officer. So I guess maybe you two could help us out with, what is the process for transferring that? Do we just make the appointment? Can we do it today without having names on the agenda? Do we make it on the 31st, which is our next meeting? Which way do we go with this?
I mean, I, I think that you can simply appoint me as the Chief Procurement Officer effective tomorrow and have Ross. He says so. What is that? We play on this.
I saw your script downstairs, gentlemen.
All right, so, and I'm assuming there is no term necessary for Chief Procurement Officer? That it is just until we appoint another one? Until we have the need to appoint another one? So with that, is there a motion to appoint our town administrator, Eric Sylego? Do we need to put, is that good enough for naming? All right, our town administrator, Eric Sylego, as the Chief Procurement Officer effective May 18.
Second.
So moved.
So moved. Okay, and we have a second.
And we have a second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, beginning with you, Teresa.
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Talcott, yes. So we'll get an appointment letter down to Kathy, and we will probably need to do this one. Yet again, a lot of swearing in. All right, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is Conservation Commission appointment. And I just want to talk a little bit about this appointment before we made it, to see where, how we want to go forward with this. I spent the end of last week, I guess, well, pretty much last week, going through the jobs and volunteering on the website to make sure that all of the postings that we have are accurate and up to date. There were some that were from 2018. And so I emailed everybody in all the departments, and I got back everything from all the departments. There were, there was a Conservation Commission vacancy posting, which is in the SharePoint, that was posted in, I guess it was September, early September of last year, for the two openings that were available at the time on the Conservation Commission. One of them was appointed because ConsCom received a volunteer form from Paulie Sweder, and that appointment was made maybe a month ago. The second appointment is still active, and it is for a term ending June 30th, 2024. And we, the selectmen, received maybe three weeks ago a volunteer response form from Linda Mack. That form is also up on the SharePoint with her qualifications. She was formerly on the Conservation Commission. She put in a request for appointment to the Conservation Commission from 1988 to 2004. She was a Conservation Commissioner here in town. She was then the Executive Director at MACC.
Oh.
She also served as the Town's Conservation Agent from 1994 to 2006. So I put this posting on the agenda because we have a qualified volunteer, and, and there is an opening that is current. So the Conservation Commission has requested that she come and attend a meeting. And there is a meeting next week that she could attend, and that we appoint on May 3rd, on the, at the next meeting, May 31st or June 7th. I, I don't think June 7th makes a difference. I don't think there's a Conservation Commission in there. I think it's next week, so just around 26 maybe? I'm not sure. So I guess my question to the board is, do we want to wait on this appointment? Or do we want to make the appointment? So I guess I'd like to hear from you.
No, we're meeting again on the, in two weeks, right?
We're meeting on the 31st, yes. And then we also have a meeting scheduled for the 7th. Normally, we're the first and the third, but we're doing the 31st because we have new staff here. And I just thought it would be good to add a meeting there. After that, it's the first and the third is what I have scheduled for the remainder of the summer, but we can talk about that. So I guess, Teresa, do you have any, anything you'd like to say as far as this appointment goes?
You know, I'll defer to the, the other members of the board, but as we're meeting again, so, you know, relatively soon, I don't mind holding until our next meeting.
So this is, I guess I'm a little confused. This is being presented to us before it went to the, a vote of the Conservation Commission?
That's correct.
And as the appointing body, does it, does it have to be voted on to, to the Conservation Commission or a commission before it comes to us?
By Charter and by law, the answer is no.
And the qualifications are all there?
Right.
That's my only.
I don't mind requesting that she attend the meeting so, you know, she can meet the current commissioners.
I don't have a problem with either. So I'm, I'm ambivalent.
Okay, then what we'll do then is defer this appointment to May 31st.
Okay.
I don't know if this is on.
She is.
She is. So Linda, I, I see that you're on the meeting. I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, but our, our decision is to defer the appointments until the 31st so that you have the opportunity to attend a meeting of the current commissioners?
Yes, I, I think that's a smart way to go just because I think you should work with your Conservation Commission on appointments and who they have on there. So I think that's, I mean, I would prefer that.
Thank you very much, Linda.
Yep.
That's where we go.
And I just, this is Teresa, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I just want to confirm, this is to fill an empty slot on the commission, like an empty three-year position?
Yes, a slot that's been open since last summer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you see that nobody got from Jennifer Eaton today?
I received.
Sabrina, do you have a note came from Jennifer Eaton? So that is, we received, or Kathy, the town clerk, received a note from Jennifer Eaton, so you choose who's exact.
Okay, so that's, that's another appointment. That's a separate posting that needs to be made and not for 10 days. Right, we were, I, I didn't, okay, thank you. So there will be an additional posting for the Conservation Commission if there's anybody out there that's interested in putting in a volunteer response form. But that is not for opening, that this post, this is for.
Correct. And thank you for your interest, Linda, and we look forward to seeing you on 31st.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
All right, moving on to 3.5. We have a request from the Board of Health to appoint to the Recycling Committee Sally Koyvoo for a term to expire, I assume it's from, you know, from now, to expire on June 30th, 2024. And again, if you look in the SharePoint, the posting was put up, I think there is, there are three other openings, correct? Or maybe four?
Satis在于.
Yes, maybe four, for Recycling Committee. And that, that posting is accurate as well, new, but it's, it's there. So you can see the posting, that's a May 11th, 2022. I, it's, it's appointment time now till the end of June. So I wanted to make sure that I knew what openings we had so I didn't miss any appointments. Because it was a challenge last June to make sure that we got everybody appointed that could be. So I just wanted to be a little more deliberate about it. So the applicant is, or not applicant, the volunteer response form came in from Sally Koyvoo, and it's there in the SharePoint. So is there a motion?
Yeah, I can make the motion this time. I make a motion to appoint Sally Koyvoo as a member of the Recycling Committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
A second, with discussion?
All right, so further discussion?
I didn't see anything in the SharePoint on this, under, under the.
3.5.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a volunteer response form.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, and then Sabrina received another that just got approved from Board of Health.
That's what I was looking for. That's what I was looking for. I just wanted to make sure we had that on record.
It is on record. Where did we, did we put that over? I probably have it right in hand.
I just want to make sure, because all the other ones have sent in approvals from the board. I just want to make sure that.
That's what came in yesterday.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with it then, I have no problems.
Any comments? We need to take a roll call vote, so Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moss votes yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Talcott.
So we got to find you, how many, three more people?
Good luck.
Okay.
Is it three or is it four?
It's at least three.
At least three.
Four members. So is it four more, or is it four total?
Four total, no. Three more.
Three more, okay. Four terms to expire on June 30th. All right, so that is that. Moving on to 4.1, meeting business. So we have a very long meeting business. Is there anybody here or on from the Water, Board of Water Commissioners?
Dave is here, the Commissioners are not.
They're looking for both Commissioners.
So they're getting ready for their meeting at 7:00.
Yeah, there's a water meeting at 7 o'clock.
All right, so if you want to move on here. Future, right there, but how can that be worked?
So, so as you know, the, the first part is that we have to hire staff to, staff to treatment plant. But we also have to have DEP assign a treatment plant operator. And so the two job descriptions are creating the position of a treatment plant operator and redefining the foreman's position to, instead of just being a foreman, it's now just your former, because you have to have an operator for each part, correct? And so this makes way for, for hiring the people later on when we're leaving. It creates the new positions.
Okay, so I, I have a question about these. Okay, so I see the two, there's the Chief Water Treatment Plant Operator.
Correct.
And then the other is, to Distribution Foreman.
Right, it's the same position as before, it's just renamed.
Okay, so a couple of questions. I, I thought these needed to go through the town administrator for approval for job descriptions, and they also needed to be vetted by ASNE. I'm going to Personnel Policies and the Secret Service on this. And I also wanted to know timeframe, because do we even have a plan for the water treatment plant?
Yes.
And when do you begin construction?
The first part will figure out. So the construction of the actual filters will, will begin this summer.
Okay, so, so talk to me about the timing of the Distribution Foreman and the Treatment Plant Operator. What is the timing for when they should be in place?
The foreman is, is a position that exists. We, the, the treatment plant should, should be when we're building, because that person needs to coordinate the, the building.
As the building is happening.
Right, so that person knows what everything, all the pieces are.
Yeah, my, my understanding, if you don't mind me speaking to this since I go to the meetings. The, the Distribution Foreman is an existing position, and they had to expand some of the duties to encompass some overlap that goes into the, the treatment plant. So they wanted to solidify that job description to add in once the trend, that, that treatment plant is built so that that person will be operating under that job description.
Once the treatment plant is built.
Correct.
We're hoping out fall of 2023 to spring of 2024.
Correct.
So a year, two year and a half out.
Correct.
But these positions are going to affect July 1st of this year.
Are they funded in your budget?
Yes.
Why would they go into effect July 1st?
Because they need the treatment plant operator this summer. Because that's when the construction, then, everything's going to be built, and that person needs to, to be in the plant.
When is the treatment plant going to be operational?
In either the fall of 2023 to the spring of 2024.
Okay, so we're approving a person to be in a position when the plant isn't even operational, is what you're asking?
But the first contracts go out this summer. And there's planning involved in that, and that person needs to be in, in with the plant.
I understand that, but I wouldn't want to hire a driver for a car if I don't have the car.
We're not hiring anyone. We just reposition our own personnel.
I understand that, but you're, you're re, I, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm seeing is that you're, you're having them in a position that they're not really doing that job for a period of time.
Well, the, the foreman position will be doing his job, and.
Yeah, the, the Distribution Foreman, I don't have any issues with that. Because I know that, that in your discussions, you added and you took some, you kind of reallocated some of the duties of the position to incorporate with that. That I don't have a problem with. I'm talking about the water treatment plant operator. Having an operator before the plant is built, I understand there's, could be some lead time, but a year before the plant gets built is my question.
Well, it's also the construction. That person needs to be involved in, in knowing all the paths they're going in.
Okay.
Because we just don't throw someone in a new, a new building and say, we'll run it.
No, I understand that.
So this person's going to be in, in the position, will go to the meetings for when they, in June or July, when, when we select the vessels and we order them, and with the construction of the vessels. And when they come in, he'll be required to help store them at Harbor Trace. And whenever the building, and when the water line goes off the bend in September, he will be responsible for, for making sure that's done right. So there's a lot of work involved in, in all these paths. There's three different construction permits, and the last one is the building.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Teresa, is that you?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I, I'm sharing the same. It seems a little early to me, but I also can understand what the, the Commissioner, the Water Department is saying about overseeing the building. I need to ask, is there some training that you also feel needs to be done during this period? Is that an additional reason you're considering it, or?
Also correct. We, we've already started the training. It takes about six months to a year for training. And next May, we're going to be, it's already budgeted to bring one new operator in. Because we're either for the, for, as soon as next fall.
Well, I guess my question is, if, if, how is the work being done? This person is doing planning. How is the work that needs to be done anyway in the Water Department being covered if the person who becomes the, the Treatment Plant Manager is at meetings over the summer?
Well, there's not much I can do. It's either going to be me working 60 hours a week or, or I give that person that job, because I'm already working 50 hours a week.
So, so it doesn't, I guess what I'm asking is, does another person need to be hired if this job description goes into practice?
Correct, and it's scheduled for next May.
For next May.
Correct, when the treatment plant actually begins construction.
So between now and then, this person, the plant manager.
Will be in training and. Will be in training and and overseeing and meeting us.
And this is a person who currently works for the water department? So who does the job that he does for the water department, or is he not?
He's the foreman, he'll move over to the treatment plant operator, and the person underneath will move up to foreman.
And then who does the job of the person who moves up to foreman? How is that covered?
That's, we we have to cover what what we have. You know. I was told I needed to wait till uh May of next year.
To hire him?
To hire.
And then you were told that by the Board of Water Commissioners? I I guess I'm, I have to read through the job descriptions and make sure that it fits with everything that we need to do for job description.
My understanding is that the job, the positions were gonna be created, I didn't realize that there was gonna be people moving into these positions immediately. Um, I I do, I have some concerns about somebody just going to meetings and doing training in a position.
Well, they're still doing their their other work.
That's what I'm concerned about, and that's why I feel that this is something that we need to talk to the union about.
Well, what is to?
The union is is meeting on Thursday with with the uh approval.
Have you reviewed these job descriptions with the laws? But um, I'm just reading the Personnel Policies and Procedures, Article Five, and I'm only bringing this up because we had this whole situation when the Collins came in and job descriptions had to be changed, the Collins report that is now on wage.
Matrix.
Matrix. So, employees of the town excluding those within a collective bargaining agreement or in the personnel contract, personnel contract, who'd be employed and blah blah blah, position description, so. A cop, uh, will be employed in a positions classified according to the town's wage matrix. Position description, each position shall have a written job description written by the department supervisor in conjunction with the town administrator. And it describes how, and the the one that you turned in looks like it should be, but I would prefer that you review this with the town administrator. Make sure that we know where it fits in in the classification plan. Make sure that it's signed off by the union, because so far, I don't think we have any um positions that are uh signed off by the union, any job description.
I don't have that on the table.
And then backing up, um, this is if it's a person who is, if an employee is transferred to a position in the same grade and step, blah blah blah. There there's a whole, if you move, if you receive a promotion and a new job description, which shall be assigned by the Board of Selectmen or designated to the staff in the new grade closest to or higher, so I want to know where it fits on the
Matrix.
The matrix, the employer is required to acknowledge any changes to his other job description. Um, and then there's also the matter of um, you enter into a probationary period for six months. This is in the Personnel Policies and Procedures. And so I want to make sure that those are adhered to, so I guess I'd like you, I'd request that you may be there before we make sure that Eric has this, so we're not talking Thursday, we're probably talking.
No, right, the.
June 7th or so. To to get these approved.
Right.
And make sure that all of these procedures have been followed, noting any that maybe should be changed. Um, because the personnel policies and procedures are rather out of date, they were written before unions were a thing in the town. Um, and so, just to make sure everything is as it should be. And then I also want to think about staffing, because I don't want the water department short-staffed because of these position changes, that's all. So I thought someone from the water commissioners would be, and I guess they have a meeting.
Right.
So we want to have a meeting on a day, we want to revisit this on a day when the water commissioners are not having a meeting.
Okay.
So that they could leave us, if that's, if um, you guys are okay with that?
I I I would agree. My my concerns that that I had was that we followed the the union to make sure that we were following both the policies and procedures, but more importantly, the union. Um, and I I do, again, I have concerns about any shifting of personnel. Um, it, I I just, I honestly feel that the um, the the plant manager one is is way too soon. Um, and that's just my own personal thought on the matter.
Go ahead, Eric.
I'll cheer through to the board, um, so it sounds like what I'm hearing is the board would like um, me to sit down with Dave and go over the job descriptions that were proposed, and also um work on a timeline and plan for both moving forward with the construction of the new water treatment plant and maintaining current staffing for operations. And not shortchanging anyone while at the same time checking with the union to make sure that we're complying with all the union procedures for doing these job changes and that they're they're okay with that.
That's correct.
I'm interested to do that, um.
When do you think it's reasonable to come back?
I I think coming back on the 31st is is reasonable.
31st? Yes, there are, Board of Water Commissioners, something on the 31st.
We have one to tonight, I'll make sure the next one is not on the 31st.
Okay, that was a question, alright.
Did we talk about one last time? I don't think we did.
You you didn't make the last one.
Yeah.
Because we, you were late and it ended up being a quick meeting.
No, I got the lowdown afterwards, not to worry. Um, no, but I remember it was the one before, because I thought that you guys were gonna do two months in advance, but.
Well, the next one would be sometime in in June.
June.
And I see, you see my schedule for for June is pretty, it's pretty tight, it's only for the treatment plant. I still have the master wallet that is taking up a lot of my time because all, I have to get all mine.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're struggling right now for water.
No, I agree, you guys are doing a bang-up job, and there's no question about that, my friend.
Alright, thanks. Um, and uh, Eric, this is in that Personnel Policies and Procedures, it's Article um five, before, and there's another article second one, that's the classification form.
Yeah, the classification, and then there's a transfer position too, we need to look at.
Yeah. I'm trying, I'm trying to have that article up here. And then how this works, but we need to get a picture of the things.
Which unit are these going into?
ASME Water Highway. And I don't know the number of ASME by by name. So I I also have a question, does this need to be posted for ten days? Um, because it's a new position. Uh, notices of vacant positions shall be moved to the house on the town road, and that the date stamped by the opposite town court for not missing.
Before they're filled, yeah, that has to follow that procedure, absolutely.
Followed as well, you can't just transfer someone directly into, it needs to follow the procedures.
Right, well, I'll work with you on it.
Sure. On Thursday. We'll we'll nail down the process on you.
And then we'll approve whatever, you know, we'll look at whatever you bring to us, so thank you. Alright, so that's 4.1, moving on to 4.2, which is the vacation buyout request for the water department.
This was from the area.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, Teresa.
Can you explain the process for vacation buyout? That if we have to approve this, how the, why this is coming before us, please?
Um, alright, this is um, the water superintendent is not a personal services contract, it is part of the union. There is no buyout provision for vacation in any of the unions. Um, most of the unions, I don't have all of the um contracts in front of me, but most of the unions allow for a one-week rollover vacation at the end of the year. Last year, because of COVID, we signed a an MOU allowing a two-week rollover for all union employees, and that that did happen. Um, so Dave um has four weeks of vacation, I am assuming you will lose three of those weeks as accurate, if you don't use them.
I'll have to take the entire month of June.
You can roll over one week. Um, so he, what he has done is request a vacation payout. Um, and we received this letter from the water commissioners, which is the only thing that we received prior to today, so I, should I read this? Or are we good? Were you able to access it in SharePoint, Teresa?
Yes, I was, I just didn't understand the the history behind it. And I'm just not clear on how much liability we have as a town, is there, you know, a a hope, you know, twenty employees that have this, that adds up, that we have to help as liability?
That's exactly my concern too.
We do not budget for the taking by, um, as a town, we don't. We don't do vacation buyouts unless it's a personal services contract with that state cap.
So we don't have any dollar-figure liability for this at the time?
Pardon me?
We don't have a dollar-figure liability about, for this?
You mean the amount that will be paid? Uh, no dollar figure has been presented to us.
Okay, thank you.
Um, it it can be, and and Dave is in the water department, so that comes out. Their pay is handled through water receipts, so it comes out of the Water Enterprise Fund as opposed to general government.
Got it, thank you.
As you probably don't know, I was supposed to go on vacation twice over the winter and once in April. I had one person out for five months for injury. I had all four of the other people have COVID over the winter. And I had staff of one other person in my office, and I was answering the phones a majority of the time. Otherwise, we really wouldn't have closed the office. And then in April, as as you know, we've been truck, we had to have construction on the well finished. And my family went to Disney, the second week of April, and I hadn't had the well finished. And I, because of the turtles, my deadline was the fifteenth for any construction. And I was not not able to take anything because of of between COVID and PFAS.
I I sympathize with that, however, I am afraid that agreeing to this sets a precedent that we as a town cannot, um, I mean, given all the budgeting that we had to do and the cutting and the not increasing requested hours, et cetera, et cetera. I, and I I understand it comes from a different fund than the Board of Water Commissioners said, okay. I just don't see how we can start doing something like this on a, on any um basis. I know when we allowed the two-week buyout carryover last year, we did have employees request to pay it out, and it was, you know, you can carry it over. It's time to take, um, I.
I tried to take the time off, but I couldn't, otherwise I would have shut down the water plant. And which is, which it comes down to.
I I wasn't aware that the water department was so short-staffed this year.
Brenda was out from November to April, almost April. Um, every other worker had COVID.
At the same time?
One in November, one in December, two in January.
So I want to make it, I want to make sure I clearly understand what you're saying, that if you let hit by a bus normally, you could get coverage for for a while, but this was extraordinary circumstances, because my big concern is we, I I'm against vacation buyout just for the fact that I believe people should be taking their vacation um as a country, we're doing that. So I need your assurances that this is just an oddity because you had so many people out sick.
That's what, there's a, there's a letter from the union saying that this is a one-time thing, it's only because of all the these circumstances happened at the same time.
I would like to read the letter in to record, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so this letter is dated May 17th, 2022, to the Board of Selectmen, Town of Townsend. To the Honorable Board of Selectmen, the union recognizes that it, in light of the pandemic and the staffing shortages it has caused, as well as the timeliness involved with the PFAS remediation from the Townsend drinking water supply, that one, David Vigent, has been unable to use his earned vacation time. The union is allowing a 120-hour payout of the earned vacation time as a one-time event to the single employee. The union agrees that if this will not constitute a past practice and or precedent, shall not use this one-time event in the future, and agrees that any further requests will be decided on a case-by-case basis. Please contact me should you have any questions or concerns. Signed sincerely, Bobby Jones, ASME Council 93.
Okay, looking at the letter, my concern is, and agrees that any further requests will be decided on a case-by-case basis. So I, you know, I understand that, but I expect to see additional requests. Um, and and where this is the Water Enterprise Fund, that's one thing. The general fund can't sustain this sort of.
Well, I agree, I I would love to be able to take a vacation.
Um, I think you should take vacation, and I think you should plan to take vacation.
I I did three times.
I think you should take it and get the coverage that we need somehow. I mean, I don't know that we have coverage from other water operators in other towns. Um, and then it looks like this is just, it says the supervisors file, is this just the supervisory?
Does that mean the supervisor?
Or does it apply to all the ASMEs? Um, I I don't know.
I just wanted to provide a little more information to the board, if I might.
Yes.
Um, so I just went through the payroll, and uh, Teresa, you had asked about the amount. Um, for uh, it it looks like uh, they're talking about a three-week buyout.
It could be, you know, if you.
That's what they, the the ASME talked about allowing a 120-hour payout, not a four-week buyout, a three-week buyout, assuming there'd be one week rollover. Um, that would be, again, approximately $4,900 total. I believe, based on the, on the.
Just on the labor and the war.
Based on the eighty hour war, it was, you know, thirty-two seventy.
Eighty hours.
Eighty hours, thirty-two seventy. And I I I also would say, I just note, based on your last statement, manager, that this is copied to the 1703 Townsend Supervisors File, but it is signed by ASME Council 93, not just by the supervisor, so I I would say. So I, I would say they're copying the supervisor. Just, it, it appears as though the entirety of Ask Me, of Ask Me Counsel 93 is signing off to disagree. I can make a, a comment if the board is interested, which, which would be that, um, the employee, the union asking for one thing, the policy is another. The, the board is not held to do either one or the other. You could split the baby, you could. I mean, the, the board did have a past precedent because of COVID of allowing a rollover of two weeks of vacation time.
But did that ones?
Because of, you know, emergencies related to COVID. Um, so that is certainly, I mean, that, that, um, that was made clear to the unions that that sort of, that COVID did represent a kind of an unprecedented, um, situation. So allowing an extra rollover for an employee is certainly.
Where you have to press to a payout.
Certainly something that you could, you could, um, would, would, um, be consistent with the way that you've treated COVID related emergencies in the past. Um, um, so allowing a rollover as opposed to a payout, um, or doing more part, part of one and part of the other. You know, allowing a rollover of two weeks and a partial payout of, 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 of one. And I, I think the board has within its discretion to expect to do those things. And I think that, um, this was a.
I, I, I will say that this is the third time that this has been brought forward, something to do with, with pay. Um, and, you know, I, we had made, um, we had made some, um, adjustments, uh, in regards to stipends, uh, to make the matter whole. And to be quite honest, I'm kind of surprised that this is, is in front of us after the, um, past deliberations of what we had. Um, so I personally feel that, um, you know, i- if, my concern is, is the, um, I, I don't want to set a precedence, and I know that Ask Me says in their letter that it doesn't set a precedence, but it also doesn't guarantee us not people grieving, other people grieving that may be in the same position that we said no last time. That's a concern of mine. Um, because there was a lot of, um, um, other people that were in your same situation that we had to say, this is all that we allowed. Um, was this part of the, Madam Chair, this is directed toward you. Was this part of what we had talked about last time with everyone else with the two weeks? When we approved the two weeks?
Yeah, we had a two week rollover, that's correct. Yes, it was all the unions. And, and the water commissioner, so yes. A rollover of two weeks additional was.
So this would then be a rollover and then a payout, which is what we didn't want with the other ones, is what we were trying to avoid. This, this is what I'm trying to figure out.
Is this meaning the split decision that Eric proposed?
Yes.
Or didn't like, or consider?
Option.
Um, it, it would be. Um, yes, I guess. I mean, that this is asking for a payout of two of those weeks that could have been rolled in.
That's what I'm getting at. Right, right.
Does that use up all your vacation now? I don't.
So, um, no, but if you want to, if you want to split it, I'm, I'm fine with that. It just, as long as I can carry over the rest of it, because then I can carry over.
There's a question in the gallery.
And China.
Yes.
The third paragraph of the letter, May 17th greatly strengthens why each town will solve its mission, which is setting up precedent that can come back to haunt the town on a personal basis. I think that the letter states that this, that Dave's had some sort of unique situations, which are not directly applicable to other employees. And the union acting as being quite confident, this is a one time event, not to be used as a, a role. That was my concern, is if you don't open the door, it turns out, if the union tries to do this again, I think this letter will spell up in their face, says, you said you wouldn't do this again. And they should not ever mention this event if they try to do this again. It's really.
I would agree with you also.
Except for one little sentence in here. I have, I have issues with that as well.
If that weren't in there, I would agree with you 100%. But I think I, I'm concerned about that part of it.
That keeps the, the door open.
For another case, um, and I.
The, we could request additional clarification from the union. Um, and, and I, I, I think, um, we could also ask them to, you know, to remove that last section, to put in a specific section saying that the union agrees, agrees that it will not, that no union will grieve anything related to the loss of vacation, you know?
I, I can see a, a different union person coming back and saying, oh, well, wait, you allowed that. And that's, I know that this rating is in there, but we had the same thing, you know? Um, and so, and we haven't been able to take vacation, therefore, um, you know, uh, we get, just get ourselves into, in deeper and deeper. That's all, um.
Would our counsel be helpful in this part about what the, uh, indications of the verbiage on the union letter protects us against?
Perhaps, um.
I mean, I, I, I will say, not to, you know, step into counsel's place, but I will say that the, the language that you could get from, from Ask Me applies to Ask Me, but doesn't apply to any of the other unions in town, if that's.
Okay, thank you.
That's my concern.
Just that fire employees.
Right.
So if, if fire employees were not seeing certain circumstances, would not, even if we tightened up the language, it obviously wouldn't apply to fire employees. But it would do, I, I, I believe it's possible to tighten up the language to prevent an Ask Me employee from grieving based on the same circumstance. And, and I agree that they would not protect us against a non-Assme union employee from filing a grievance.
Okay, so I guess it comes down to, do we want to make additional requests from the union for, uh, additional information or verbiage, title verbiage? Do we want to, uh, split the difference somehow? Um, it seems like these are options, and they may, they may not be one or the other. It may be dual, uh, and some today, some differently.
What?
Police are Ask Me.
Police are Ask Me.
So that's people who cover.
Yes, follow.
Thank you.
Split the difference, or make a decision, and we'll have our own request.
Um. If, if I was able to know that this was just a one time thing, and, and it would also need to be understood that this can't happen anymore, um, I'm, I probably could make a decision.
Okay, well, I need the additional, um, I, I have a concern about that paragraph. I think I agree with Teresa, that I'm going to have that reviewed a little bit more. Um, I would want certainty from Ask Me that this applies to all unions and that it is, there will not be any further requests, even though that's kind of, but it, it just seems like, no, we don't, that's a one time, and because it's not a, we don't pay out.
We could, um, and then, again, I apologize for interrupting, but.
No, go ahead.
We could ask the union to state in the letter that they would not support any further requests. We obviously can't stop an employee from coming in and asking. But if the union says, we're not going to support any further requests of this type, and then we agree that no Ask Me employee will grieve their loss of vacation based on this.
As long as, I think we should also let them see or know that what our personnel policy is as well, that that's part of the personnel policy, and everybody should be following the same.
The same personnel policy.
Right.
Um, it, when you start making exceptions.
That's where we run into.
When you find calls and.
Expensive ones.
And we can't sustain as a town any further expensive, um, calls.
I can, again, I can certainly understand, I think, what I'm hearing from the board. And if you'd like to reach out to the union with some proposed language changes that I think I'm hearing the board might need in order to make a determination about this, I can certainly just.
I'd be willing to do that. Teresa, you'd be willing to do that?
Teresa, would you be willing to, um, have Eric, uh, reach out to Ask Me for, um, further language to, um, clarify what he hears from the three of us?
And you're okay with that, Dave? We do that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay, I would, I would also want to split the difference in my perspective.
I know that we, um, have a meeting with, um, that, that's Town Council on the 31st.
We can give Labor Council a call. We can work out, revise language, let it by Labor Council. Anytime you're ready, and then.
Yeah.
But then, after that.
That makes sense, so I, I. I think I can nail down what you're looking for in language for purposes of Ask Me unions, to make sure that it's not going to come back to bite us if the board makes that decision, and then present that language to the union and see if they do.
So is, is there a motion for Eric to, um, go back to the language that, um, clarified?
Yep.
So moved.
All right, second round, um, all those in favor? Teresa, are you there to vote?
Teresa Amos, yes.
Just Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Town, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
I get a real, gosh, hell.
Don't run, take your car.
All right, um, moving on, our next one is ARPA, and then the emergency funds policies. And I see that we have Jennifer Thompson on the line. She's our ARPA consultant for, um, Capital Strategic Solutions.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Um, thanks for being on.
Sure.
Um, we have three policies here that, um, all right, Jennifer has sent me some, um, policies from the city of Lynn. And I forgot where the other one was, somewhere Pacific. Anyway, um, and it, it has become, now that we're into ARPA, we need to figure out how we have these ARPA projects defined. How will all of the departments that have received ARPA money, how will they go about expending that money and making it clear to the Board of Selectmen what it's been spent on? So, um, some of them are small amounts of money, but some of them are larger. So the first policy, I call it two dash 2022, is to define the process for expending designated ARPA funds, meaning those funds with a defined ARPA program. So that's the first policy, and that is pretty much a one pager. The second policy, I call number 2022, and this is for a sub recipient funding agreement. So for example, um, funds being transferred to TEO. So, um, that is here, and there is a form for that. This came largely from the city of Lynn. And we are a much smaller entity, so some of this may or may not be, um, relevant. But that's the second one. And then the third one is, how do we, so as people spend money, there may be money left over that could go to other projects. So the third one is policy number XXXX. And this one, um, was largely Jennifer. So thank you, Jennifer, this is the process for allocating and reallocating ARPA funds. And I did make one small change to that from what you had sent me. And then the ARPA project request form, which was the first part of what was sent over from the city of Lynn. And Jennifer, I'm not sure I sent that to you, did I?
You did, yeah. You did. I think, I'm pretty sure you did, yeah.
So those are the three policies. So I just wanted to quickly look at the first one, um, the, um, and this is our first look at it. Let me just say that for people in the audience, and, you know, Eric and Ross, this is the first that this has been unveiled. So the, the process for tonight is just to introduce them and to make any changes hopefully on the 31st, and then to have a first reading and a second reading in June. And then we'll be ready for the fiscal year that starts in July. So that's the idea here. So, um, for expending ARPA funds, the purpose of the policy is to define the process for expending the designated ARPA funds. The Board of Select, Selectmen shall notify the entity, which is a department or the organization of the project number associated with an ARPA project which funds are allocated by the Board of Selectmen, and the general expected use of the funds. And I put that wording in there because I'm thinking of.
Which one are you reading?
Two dash 2022. It's a one pager, you see that?
Now I do.
Okay, um, I, I put that, the general expected use of the funds, because like e-permitting, there, we said, okay, you got $60,000 for e-permit. And so there's any purchase that's required for the software itself. And then there could be, um, kiosks. So there could be key purchases, a printer purchase. There could be iPad purchases.
Tech services.
Um, yes, that sort of thing. So, um, so we notify, other things like, um, the freezer at the senior center, that's just a one shot deal, you know, it's one item. And so that's pretty clear, but maybe there's, you know, $200 left from what we allocate. So they spend it, what happens? Okay, the entity shall provide to the Board of Selectmen by July 1st for each fiscal year during which funds shall be expended. So maybe we want to make that a different date. An expected project expenditure out on, what are they going to spend? What do they expect to spend the money on? Maybe we want to make it an offset from when we provide them with the project number.
Right.
You know, within 30 days, or, you know, this could be an offset. So these are things to. This could be an offset. So these are things to think about. And the expected project expenditure outline shall include the expected date of timeline, the vendor and amount, and a description of the products for which the funds shall be used. Once the expected project outline has been approved by the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen will notify the town accountant of the expected expenditure of funds for the ARPA project. The entity, the department or organization, will provide the town accountant with the warrant for the approved... So I don't know if I'm using my terminology right of warrant. I think warrant is what comes up to us there. So we'll give the receipts, the...
Invoices.
Invoice, the papers that you fill out that, you know, that have to be signed off on. What are those called?
Requisition.
There you go.
Is it requisition? The requisition?
That's the paperwork from before you get it.
Right.
Okay. And then for the approved project, when the expenditure has been made. So is that the invoice? The invoice, not the requisition.
Once you've made it, they give you an invoice because they want you to pay it.
Okay. Well, that's what I want then. Not the requisition, the invoice. For the approved project, when the expenditure has been made. And then the accountant will, instead of saying, "Pay the warrant for ARPA funds," will put the invoice, put the invoice on the warrant. On the warrant for the Board of Selectmen to sign. The O S to sign for the designated projects. And Emily's here, even though she's not here for this. She's been using... She and I have met because she has ARPA funds. And I have requested that she come in in our second meeting in July to provide us with the timeline, pretty much exactly what's right here. The timeline, what's in this. Because she has a good chunk of ARPA money to provide services for the public and the departments, et cetera, et cetera. So she's going to come back with that. Once we've approved it, then she just runs for the fiscal year. And when she charges it, it goes to the accountant. And then we, the Board of Selectmen, say, "Oh, yeah." And the accountant has the list of what she's going to be spending and says, "Oh, yeah, it's this way."
Basically, it's the same process that's in place. It's just outlined as ARPA funds.
ARPA funds.
Gotcha.
So that's it. Because when the accountant pays them, they have to pay them for the project. Is that right, Jennifer? I guess that's why you're here.
You're saying you have to pay it per project? Is that what you said?
Yeah. Like, each project, there might be 20 things that come out of one of those project numbers.
Right. Exactly.
And so the accountant has to know that those are allowable expenses for the project number and to charge it to the correct project number. And the department or the entity, whatever, needs to know what their ARPA number is so that they have a handshake with the accountant. And we don't have things coming out of the general fund that should be coming out of ARPA.
Absolutely. And so just to go back to the earlier sentence, I definitely think you want to have the deadline not be July 1. You want it to be 30 days from today, Friday. Because if we do end up reallocating funds, it might be in the middle of a fiscal year, and you want them, the process to still work. If it's after July 1, to be able to still expend those funds that fiscal year.
Okay, so 30 days.
Exactly, yeah.
I think 30 days is reasonable.
From notification.
Yeah. And we haven't really done that yet with... I mean, we've expended some ARPA funds for, you know, the pole pads and, you know, a few other things that ARPA funds are good use for. But we haven't really gone hog wild with it yet. We haven't gotten a whole lot coming in for ARPA funding yet.
Right, but we want the policy in place.
And we want the funds to be expended.
Correct.
So, and then, so that's this one. So my next question is, do we need a form for notifying for notifying the department or entity that this is their project number, this is how the project's defined, and this is what we expect you?
The requisition.
No, a notification form to the department saying, "We, the Board of Selectmen, have provided you with these. Now you need to follow this policy, but let us know what you're going to spend." ARPA O2 or whatever it is.
Right. Okay.
Do we need a form for that?
Do we have to have that, or can't they use the other?
Can we just send an email?
I mean, I think...
How do we notify?
Well, we can certainly notify via email. We can certainly do it that way, along with a copy of them. So we send an email to the department or the entity with a copy of the policy saying, "We are hereby notifying you that, you know, this is your ARPA number is XYZ," you know, "and that you are being awarded under ARPA, so it's not to exceed 13." And this is the purpose for which you have been granted funds. "Attached, please find the policies and the forms you're going to submit back to the Board of Selectmen in order to get payment for the invoices that you receive as a part of your ARPA designation."
Now, is that the paperwork you need, Jennifer?
Well, no. So the thing that I need... Well, yes, for anything that's a sub-recipient, absolutely. The big key is making sure that it gets charged to the right project because that ties to your project numbers in the Treasury's portal as well. We link them, so everything will match up, which will hopefully make reporting easier annually. You know, we just did the April one. Like you said, there wasn't a lot to that one. But next year, I'm sure we'll have a lot more because you'll have a lot more projects with expenditures. So, yeah, I think that the way Eric just described it is perfect. And as long as they know the project number, that's the real key.
And for purposes of reporting, does it make sense to have the policy indicate that Jennifer also needs to be notified? Is that something that we need to do, Jennifer? Loop you in on the invoices themselves? Or do you need some kind of more general reporting later, like just from the account?
Yeah. So the only thing we'll need is, you know, what's nice is they don't require copies. You'll need them, obviously, in place for when you get audited. But we don't have to submit them. So I don't think you'll have to have somebody send me actual copies of invoices as you're paying them, but just the accountant's report from Vadar.
What's the expenditure thing? Is that what you're...
Yeah, that would be the expenditure. So that'll show every expenditure by project.
And it'll have all the information you need for your stuff?
Yes.
And that comes from Vadar?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So the first, we'll make it notify the entity by email with a description of the project and this policy. All right. So I guess what I'd like, everybody, Chaz, Eric, if you want to, Theresa, if you have anything that you want me to change, I could write up what we just did, send it out to you guys if there's a change that you want on it. Note that, and we'll discuss on the 31st.
Okay. You okay with that, Theresa?
Oh, I guess we do. Okay. So, 26. She might come back. All right. The next one, do we want to go over all of these right here? Or do you guys want to read through them now that you understand what I'm doing here?
Well, I was going to suggest after that, now I'm seeing what you are looking for, how about if you send them all three of them? We can make changes, and then we can have that done for the 31st. I think that's... I mean, you've done the lion's share of the work. I think we just need to wordsmith this.
Madam Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes, are you back?
Okay, I dialed back in. No, I'm sorry, Chaz. I'll let you finish. I just want to make sure you can hear me now.
No, 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 that's okay. You're part of this.
The only thing I was unclear of, but I'm sure it was discussed, was how are the project numbers assigned and how do we make sure that we keep the project numbers aligned? I just know in big projects that I worked on this before where funds were associated to project numbers, it can get tricky.
Jennifer assigns the project numbers. She has provided us already with a list of the projects that are all currently assigned. And what we haven't done is this notification process of that first policy. And so we're going to do that since we make it for... And then it's going to be up to the department or entity and the accountant to make sure that things get put in the right place. And when Jennifer does the reporting, she'll be another set of eyes on that. Jennifer, how frequently do you look at what's going on?
So this is where I'm just a little confused, and I apologize. In order to communicate, you need to make sure you identify the project number. But how does the communication on the project number start? Or how do you communicate that you need a project number?
So, if I may, so hi, we haven't met yet, but my name is Ms. Jen. Hi, Theresa. Nice to meet you. So anytime the select board votes an ARPA project, it gets assigned an ARPA number, a unique identifier that is matched in the town's general ledger, in your Vadar system, and also in the Treasury's portal. That way, they both match. So that way, and it happens anytime you vote an ARPA project, which you've voted most of them already. And then the town accountant sets that up. And then anytime a department or, you know, needs to pay an invoice, it will get charged to that unique project identifier, which also matches in the Treasury's portal. That way, everything matches up across the board, which should make things much easier, making sure things get allocated correctly and also making sure when you do get audited that everything is streamlined and much easier to look at.
That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you very much, Jennifer.
You're welcome. And to answer the question, so you're not due to report again until April, but I expect to look at, you know, your Vadar reports quarterly just to make sure everything's getting charged correctly. I think having a second set of eyes, just look at that, is a good thing. You don't want to be trying to play catch-up next April when we're trying to do the report. And I think that'll be a fairly simple review, just making sure that invoices get charged to the correct projects.
Okay. Thanks, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
The last policy I want is to define the process for all funding and allocating ARPA funds. So the purpose of the policy is to define the process for what I just said. The Board of Selectmen shall approve and allocate funding for all ARPA projects by a majority vote of the board, such vote to be taken at a public open session of the select board, which we've already done, but this is for the future. Unused funds that were previously allocated by the select board for an ARPA project can be reallocated or repurposed to a different or new ARPA project by another majority vote of the select board. So if unused, you know, if you don't use all of what you expect to use, then, okay, I'm not using anymore. It comes back, we reallocate. Everything has to be allocated by December of 2024. So we need to be pretty sure by that date, we have to be sure by that date, that we are spending all the money that we can.
Can I ask a question on that? So they have to be allocated, but we can still reallocate after that date?
Not after December 2024.
So everything has to...
Am I right on that, Jennifer? Everything must be allocated by December, last day of December 2024.
That's absolutely correct. Yep, that's correct.
Not reallocation, everything has to be...
So I should put a date in here?
Yeah.
Right.
Allocating, which must be done by... Okay. So I've read the first two bullets, right? Yeah. Departments or organizations shall make requests for allocation and reallocation of ARPA funds to the select board through the town administrator. So if someone wants something changed, they go to our town administrator. And ARPA funds application form shall be completed for each request for funds. And that's this then. Yes, with the blue one to distinguish it from the one before.
Yeah.
I added that, Jennifer, after... Departments, organizations shall notify the town administrator when an ARPA project has been fully completed and all funds associated with the project have been fully expended. The town administrator shall inform the select board of all such project completions and close-ups. And then the town accountant shall provide the town administrator and the select board with quarterly reports on all ARPA expenditures. And I guess the other thing, because this is federal funding, if we spend more than $750,000, only the town, spend more than $750,000 of our allocation in a fiscal year, we are subject to a single audit, which is a separate charge on the audit line with the town auditor. And it can be paid for with ARPA funds.
Oh, okay.
So that's that. We have one of our budgets is that $100,000 is set aside to pay the consultant, to pay any extra accounting work that's needed for ARPA and to do auditing, should we need a single audit in a year.
A contingency, yes.
So that's what this is. So I will send these, I'll make a few edits, and I'll send them all out again to you guys. I'm going to do it in email as opposed to just putting it into SharePoint. And then by December 31st, whatever we've got, you know, any changes in May. Did I say December? Thank you. My bad. I'll figure it out. May, by May 31st. I'm looking at December 31. By May 31st, whatever you guys send back to me, I'll put in. And we can update and then get a final version. Are we good?
Yes, but can I ask a question since Jennifer's on the line? You know I have questions. Jennifer, hypothetically, if we are using a third party or we give funds to a third party, X amount of dollars, they have additional funding left over. All right, let's say $1,000 because we said, you know, we gave them more. How does that work? What is the process for that? Does it come back to us and we decide whether we want to reallocate? Or does the entity come back to us and say, "We have additional funds and we'd like to use it for blah, blah, blah"? How does that work?
So either. You could do it either way. So if they had another use that you felt was important and the board felt it was a priority, they could reallocate that. If not, the funds could come back, as long as it's within that timeframe for you to reallocate it.
Okay, and then we go back into what we originally allocated it for?
Yes.
Gotcha.
And then you could reallocate it. So, you know, say there's $1,000 that comes back and it's not going to be used for that project, but another project, you need $1,000, you can by a vote of the select board reallocate that.
So Jennifer, on that same line, how does reporting work with them? Like, it's our ARPA tenant project that transfers to a sub-recipient. Are they reporting back to us and we report? Or do they have to do their own reporting to the feds?
No, they report to you. It all goes through you.
Okay, so...
So we still...
Okay, I need to make sure that that's standard. Sub-recipient reporting comes back to us. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So any other questions for Jennifer before we release her for the evening? I have none.
I'm good for now, but I will hold you later on.
I'm happy to come anytime. It's great to see you guys.
All righty.
All right. Theresa, do you have any further? No? All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. So we'll pick up on the policies. Next policy is the emergency funds policy. And Emily's here for that, so I'm going to ask her to come up.
Emily!
I didn't, I couldn't print anything out. I'm so sorry.
Pop it up on the screen. All right. So this is the use of the emergency fund. All right, so this is the use of the emergency fund policy. We do have under selectmen's policies, this is policy 2014-01. We have what's called the administration of worthy funds. But when we're looking at things these days, we think, and that is historically the name of it. What Emily did was she took the emergency assistance funds form and, well, she took the worthy policy, which I included again, and she, from that, wrote up the emergency assistance funds process. And so what we would like to do is make this a policy that replaces 2014-01. So that's what the thought process is here. So I'm going to read through this. The applicant is referred to the emergency assistance program by the community services coordinator or another public entity. So these calls will come in to, or eventually they might not come in directly, they might come to Sabrina, they might come to the board of health. They're there, but they'll get funneled to Emily. And Emily also gets calls from other public entities because she is our community services coordinator. So the community services coordinator or an assigning by the... So let me look at that. Or an assigning by the community services coordinator from the Abram S. French Committee will conduct an application interview with the resident. So right now, that's a three member, I believe it's an elected board. Do you know Harrison? Abram French, is that elected or appointed? I know that you've been looking at those lists. Do you remember? Okay, well anyway, right now there are two members on that committee. They will conduct an application interview with the resident. And that is what has typically happened with the administration of worthy funds. During the interview, as much, I'm going to change this to, as much information as possible is collected to help fill narrative for the applicant's needs. And we have, let me see then, the interview sheet. And I included that in the SharePoint. So that's this, I'm going to throw that in.
And the application is something that I did not change based on talking to the representatives on the Abram S. French Fund.
Yeah.
It does not appear to be on the...
We're going to commit, so we may want to consider posting to that and get a third committee member. So anyway, the interview sheet is this one that was in the SharePoint. The call is made by someone from either community services coordinator or from the committee. And we've had several of these over the past, since Emily started. So the... Yeah, we started with that. That was her first meeting at like 10:00 or something. But we've had at least one a week since she's been here, a request. So she figures out where the... So either she calls or someone from Abram French calls to collect the information that's needed. The completed interview sheet is submitted to the community services coordinator. And then the applicant will receive a hard copy of the emergency assistance funding request form. And that's the other one. This is this, and it's part of the worthy funds right now. And it's the form that says, these are the things that you must provide, a letter explaining the issue, a copy of the bill you want paid, or estimating the cost of whatever, proof of household income, et cetera, et cetera. So this gets sent to the applicant, who then submits them back to the community services coordinator. The community services coordinator will create a file for the applicant, including all materials. And Emily can say that she's looking at, we're looking at a database that's a confidential database, that these things can be kept in so that it isn't all over the place. It's just in this one place and it's totally confidential. After the applicant file has completed and emergencies has been completed, so the file is the interview and the responses to this from the applicant. Then an emergency, I should call it that. An emergency assistance program meeting will be coordinated by the community services coordinator. And the applicant request will be reviewed, discussed and put to vote. The meeting must include one member of the board of selectmen, one member of the Abram S. French Fund Committee, the town administrator or a designee, which we are saying is the community services coordinator, but the town administrator can make that decision.
Or how am I able to be at something yet?
Right, exactly. I can't be there. And if the board approves, which is this three-member group, if the board approves in full or in part, it shall identify the fund from which the disbursement will be made and it shall cause a warrant to be processed for payment. So maybe that should be an enforce to be processed for payment. That word warrant is tripping me up.
And it should also probably say if the board approves by majority vote. So assuming if the board says two to one, we want to give them money for giving them the funds.
The funds don't go directly to the applicant. Instead of whatever...
To pay the invoice, I mean.
Pay whatever they are requesting we pay. It goes directly to, if it's rent, it goes to the land. But if it's electric, it goes to you myself.
Correct, but what he's saying is that we should have it written in there that it needs to be a majority vote, two out of three. Just to cover our bases, which I agree with.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be unanimous? Yeah. Because it's not, because this is like a, like a, this isn't a town, this is kind of set up kind of a... You're probably right. That's kind of overkill, I mean.
I'm going to, I'm going to change that word board in D to is the... What do I call it?
Committee?
Committee. The community services coordinator will complete the invoice and submit it, and submit it to the accountant's office or to the selectmen's office.
So this is the...
This is the thing that we've been going back and forth.
For the past few days. In my short time here and with the many that I've already had, what has happened is I have created the warrant half the time and then gone to Tara, the accountant, and she's had me sign it.
And that's what we've been doing.
Yeah. But we have to, and my concern is the confidentiality of what it is. So I would much rather have her go directly to the accountant than to have to go to another department.
Right. Okay, so do I leave warrant there in number five in both places?
I'm sure, I believe someone might have a question.
Yes, Chris.
This is new to me. I don't really know much about what you're talking about. This is a new program to town or...
No, this has been in place a long time. If you go to the selectmen's policies on the left sidebar, the board of selectmen page, you can read the use of worthy funds then.
Where do these come from?
People who have left requests to the town. Now there could be, depending on how we do ARPA funding, there could be, you know, things that they could qualify for. Most of the funds that we've been giving out have been from the things that were left by people of the town for the... The town has several poor or worthy funds. And there's actually words that say that these are to go to the worthy poor. So...
Correct.
And which is why we're making it the emergency assistance funds so that we don't have to make a determination on whether someone is worthy or not.
Or poor.
Or poor.
Wait, 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 why?
Well...
Why?
In any event, it's, it's requests. So that answers the question. So moving back to the policy.
It's a question.
It is a big question.
A lot of people didn't know about that.
Yes, okay.
And it's not like we have unlimited...
We don't have a lot.
And we did discuss at the last meeting, limiting the amount per request. And maybe we want to talk about...
Putting a cap on.
Putting a cap on what we are able to give out.
And once somebody fills out one of these applications or comes to me with a need, this isn't the only support that's given to them. If this is applicable in that case, then we go through the whole process. If this isn't necessarily applicable and there's other programs that can be helpful, I go through that with them to help them, whether it be fuel assistance, whether it be signing up for SNAP, whether it be some... Yep.
There's a lot of...
So there's a lot of different processes that I go through when we discuss this. And I do bring that to the committee as well to say, here are all the things that I can work on personally with this resident or family. And that's kind of where we come up with our determinations together.
So Madam Chair, are we looking at what Emily has proposed here with the changes that we're making to replace policy 2014-01 with the Townsend Emergency Assistance Fund? Is that...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's the plan.
And I, I support that.
And I believe somebody else may have a question.
Let me finish what I'm doing here and then I'll take more public questions. All right, under number five, should I keep the word warrant there? Is that the correct word? The community services coordinator will complete the warrant and submit to the selectmen's office?
To the accountant.
To the accountant.
And that's just, that's just a question as to whether or not Emily's actually physically preparing the warrant or is she just giving an invoice to the accountant's office who doesn't prepare the warrant and stuff?
I'm not sure the process and I'm not sure what it should be. I'm not sure if the funds require sign off by the BOS. This was done so that the board of selectmen didn't have to make the determination.
Or wait for the two weeks.
Right, to just be able to... So I could help use how with number five, as far as what... So D, for D, I'm going to make it, and it shall cause an invoice to be processed for payment. All right, and then five, the question is, what happens with that invoice? Does the community services coordinator complete the warrant, submit it to the accountant's office? When submitting the warrant, the accountant will need an original copy of the bill to be paid out for the applicant. And then the community services coordinator will receive a copy of the bill, sign the warrant to complete the submission process, and the community services coordinator will perform a follow-up with the applicant. And we good with that? So that it doesn't, so that it doesn't have to wait two weeks to go out?
And it doesn't go through a different process? It gets taken care of? Yeah, I agree with that. The, the...
I'm sorry.
Teresa, did you have a question?
Yeah, the follow-up we're talking about is just the follow-up, completing the follow-up on the warrant. There's nothing in the article as you're writing about, about following up with the applicant.
Yes, there is. It's five C. Five C is the community services coordinator will perform a follow-up with the applicant.
With the applicant. Okay, thank you.
So we have Teresa, the same person, just one person dealing with the applicant instead of several, which I think is important.
Okay, that's...
Can I take that C and make it six?
That's, yes.
Instead of putting it under the...
It gets, it's on...
I'm going to make it six and I'm going to say, once the warrant has been processed.
Yeah.
The community services. Okay, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to write this up. I'm going to send it to Emily for vetting. And then Emily will send it out to all of us. And if it looks, and we'll put it on the 31st for first ruling. And this will be our replacement. And we're also going to edit, it's not going to say worthy funds that the property, we're going to edit this that gets sent to the applicant because it's really kind of...
It's extremely awkward to have somebody come in and...
Right, and we send them this and it's like, oh dear, I'm not worthy.
And to just reiterate for anybody who might not know, this is a one-time assistance. And we did put a limit that it can renew every 10 years. So if an applicant comes to us this year, they are not able to fill out another application for this fund again. Yes.
I do want to make that clear, or I want clarification. You're talking about one-time assistance, financial assistance through this program. But when you follow up, you have the opportunity to offer what other opportunities are available in a system reaching out to other opportunities in the community or in the state.
Absolutely, yes.
Emily has done a terrific job on that with the applicants that she's helped in the past four or five years.
I almost wonder if that should be part of it. And, you know, we'll follow up with the applicant and provide additional assistance as needed.
I believe that it's listed in there, but when I go to redo it and to edit it a little bit more, I can add that in there as well.
It might make it too...
Teresa, could you repeat that? You're on like slow rollout.
Five minutes from the building, so it might wait, let it wait. But I'm saying it might help to follow up with the applicant and offer additional assistance needed. But then I'm concerned that might make it...
Emily's got it.
I got it. Don't worry.
She'll put that in there. Thanks Teresa. I'm going to just take Andrea's question very quickly before we move on. Go ahead Andrea.
Thank you. When the, say Abram French is reduced down to its principal, how is it going to be then accounted for within the process?
Well, that's more of a, we could put that in the process, but I didn't want to really name every fund for what. Abram French is a whole different thing because it has its own checkbook.
It has its own...
Oh, yes. But the named worthy, the worthy funds that are deeded to the town, you know, through wills, they all are not supposed to be spent past their principal.
Different ones have different, you know...
They have different designations, but they're not, still not supposed to be spent past their principal, I don't think.
We can state in there that the committee will be cognizant of the designations for each requirement and et cetera. So yes.
Thank you.
We are aware of that. We could put that in the policy. Thanks a lot.
Are we good?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, 4.5, I'm just going to very quickly. I will come, I'll talk to you tomorrow, Eric. In order to, the owners of our website are three people who no longer are employed with the town. And so we need to change that with Civic Plus. And I've known this for a while, but I didn't want to do it until we had a permanent TA in place because I didn't want to keep having to change who it was. So we're going to make that designation. I will work with you on the email that needs to be sent, if that's okay, with the board, for me to work with Eric on that.
Yes, I am very good with that.
Teresa, are you in range?
Yes, I'm right here.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
All right, thank you. All right, so that's 4.5. 4.6 is discussing vote on the contract for county services.
So as, I'm sure...
So as, I'm sure everybody knows, um, Terry Walsh is going to try to retire again. Um, she is leaving Townsend on the twenty seventh of this month. I'm going to take a half a second to say yes for her time here. She has been outstanding to help us keep the finances moving and will not happen without her. She's also been a good alter ego to help me tell me, oh, you can't do that. What do you think you're doing over there? So she is a very good check and balance issue to this. We've posted positions since September and not found applicants that are qualified. And look forward to decide to go out and outsource to town accounting functions. We've talked to two vendors, um, and Eric and I and Terry met today and would like to recommend that we fill the class. You know, Melanson has been the town's auditor. Um, they're ending that process as a new auditor has been selected. We think that the folks in Melanson, uh, will provide the services that Terry has indicated need to be done. They'll work with our existing assistant, accountant Lee. And they can start, they, if you give them a go ahead tomorrow, we're going to have somebody here by next Tuesday. So we have a little whirlwind. The contract we proposed with them would be thirty-five thousand, up to thirty-five thousand dollars going with hourly rates to get us through this year and to close out the books. The next contract will be superseded in places and won't be signed with them about two months ago for twenty-four thousand to step in and help with some of the records. I tried to stop them. They changed on like one or two days to work into it and. Any money is not to spend. Um, they, they've charged ninety thousand to these. They are week, preferably on Tuesdays because that will allow them to help get the warrants ready for selecting. Terry and Eric and I have gone through the current budget status and both the proud sources to align who I transfer, we use the fund, um, or that's information.
So your comment of this year means till June thirty first?
Roughly up to thirty-five thousand that could put us through if we close out this year. By funds for those budget for next year is eighty thousand. We're asking for ninety, but we figured we would have had to pay much likely help and show us if we had a full-time authority. That would come out to ninety thousand less than we paid for a company. We did talk then about changing the cancellation terms, if we should find, or actually said we, the town should find in-house, um, town accounting, we can make a contract assist to their service. So I think if needs the need, those are spot that's right at the town. Um, they definitely have services, they know us, we know them, those, town accountants know them.
Can I ask a couple of questions? In the event that we're going to need to, um, I mean, there have been times that we needed to do some additional research on something that we had to, I don't know, look, look in the, look through something, would it have happened in the past? Uh, would that be something extra that they would be charging or would that be part of what they're? Because I didn't really see it.
Services answer the part about questions and assist the voting preparation. So I think that they will be available essentially forty hours a week remotely, but they'll be here all day.
Okay.
Well, we, so you could call them with a question site. So where are we standing on this account so far this year? What's the balance in this account? We need someone to research what we pay this vendor.
That's what I was looking at.
That should sort of stand there so many type of functions.
Okay.
Well, we have someone in the office.
Yes, the town's. The assumption is we're keeping the system, um, doing the things that she's been doing. Feed information to the board.
As part of, as part of reviewing the scope of work, we specifically carved out, we talked to Terry and specifically carved out the, the, um, job description that encompasses leads function as things that the town is providing as part of the contract.
That is the point. If we are, because when I read it initially, I read it and assumed that we didn't know long enough to. Um, and so if it occurs, if there were things that were carved out, like this contract, we have all these things still in place. I would be, um, now.
It's a, it's a good question. I think there's no, because if I'm too mad, this is the town that's working a lot. We talked to Melanson, they knew the work that, that we was doing, our history and that was in there. The realistic cost to get a town account, certainly the eighty thousand people budgeting and posting jobs is attractive. Um, I think it's worth them to ninety thousand each year. It's probably the best the only towns will get on a cost for a county basis. Still need someone here, um, to be personally, uh, the information into the data system. Yes, we do, uh, we.
The other, uh, vendor that we want to have. So I was, um, that was the reason why I felt like we believed.
Madam Chair, how, how many hours is the assistant town of Townsville?
Fifteen for F Y twenty-three, ten right now. Fifteen for F Y twenty-three, I believe it's a moment. And, um, and there is an additional, uh, six hours of a week, which is probably high. But we carved out the ARCA accounting that we didn't know, you know, that we didn't. So she could look up to nineteen because she's not benefited. So anyway, there's a given page there for nineteen. But if there were six hours of ARCA-related accounting to be done, because that's a whole separate job in itself, you know.
And she is non-benefited, Mr. Trump, I said that. Thank you.
That position is not benefited.
Especially with my, this town has one, well, covers the way it puts our way of operating. By the time we work, it gives us the ability to act out of today's notice. We should have to define the certain job in-house.
I'm good with the contract.
I'm sure.
Yes, yeah.
Keeping it like it is, I, I.
All right, so what do we need?
We have to vote on approval.
Vote on approval and sign the contract and ship here.
So we just need this second page to have another.
It's covered this year.
The first part, right? Yes. All right, so is there a motion to accept the contract?
Oh, excuse me, Madam Chair, can I just ask one more question? Sure, make motion. Um, no, I just want to clarify because I, I looked through this very quickly. There's no, um, set terms on length of time they, um, hours that they're working for us. So if we have a, a large project that's still within the scope of this, we're not just.
Because we didn't have the scope of standard A, that's covered. I, I went through the list of functions that Towne County has covered by. And until it matches this, 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 uh, um, if there's something totally separate from Towne County functions that we need to done, then I would assume that would be an extra, extra charge, but.
And Madam Chair, can you explain to me in the past, have we used services like this outside of Schedule A? Or, and how was that covered? How were the fees for that covered?
We haven't still used them outside of Towne County at all. Um, other than Melanson and Heath has done our auditing for the last many, many, many years. Um, and, and they are not the, the auditors for the next three fiscal years, so. Um, so they aren't known by our accounting.
And do we have a sense of what, of what type of services would fall outside of Schedule A that we'd have to go to our accountant and could it be covered by our assistant accounting? I just, I don't know what that bread box is. I'm just trying to understand.
With Lee, I don't see anything outside except ARCA, but that's covered by the N A.
Okay, so.
I think the, I think the unfortunate situation is it would be really unforeseen. If something fall out of this, there's no one.
And nobody can tell me what that bread box is or what it looked like before.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just like COVID, no one knows or something.
Thank you. That was the answer I wanted. And I wanted that. Okay, I'm ready. Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So is there a motion to, uh, will we use?
Yes.
Um, a motion to sign the contract for Melanson for accounting services, um, beginning tomorrow? Through the end of the fiscal year? Um, from now, I'll just say from now through the end of the fiscal year? As outlined in the, um, letter.
I'll make a motion that we vote on a contract as outlined in a letter dated May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two with Melanson to provide accounting services for the town of Townsend.
Second.
To F Y twenty-two.
It's in the letter. It's outlined in the letter, so.
There's instructions.
Good to go, Madam Chair.
All right, um, others in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
We need a second motion?
I'm sorry.
Just devoted to the fiscal year, the end of the fiscal year. Now we're doing next year.
All right, so is there a motion to, um, accept Melanson, um, professional municipal accounting outsourced, or outsource services of the, um, for the remainder of this, this, uh, for F Y twenty-three, um, last terminated? For the contract?
I make a motion that we use Melanson Accounting Services for the remainder of, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-three, uh, for the May sixteenth contract termination as, uh, rights as listed in the contract.
I'm sorry, can I?
All right, any further instructions?
Hi.
Justice Duranian, yes? And says the chair, so we don't have to sign anything.
Um, just let the board know, we, following our discussion, we are going to be looking to reinvigorate our, our, um, posting for the position. Um, make sure it's still available on M M A and, um, and any other places where we can think of to try and repost it and fingers crossed. We'll let you know if we're given any.
Can I ask a question on that, even though it's not on our agenda, or should I wait?
Go ahead, ask the question.
Is there a, I know like the town clerk has like a listserv that they go on. Is there one for accountants that you could throw that on?
Association.
Yeah.
Terry had posted something there for us before.
Okay.
I don't understand if they wasn't, they obviously told me to turn it down.
We'll double check.
Okay.
Make sure it's up there.
Okay.
We actually did get one person that was sent in, but heard it been suffered by, she decided to. I can't remember, one of those rounds of person that went to the wide and letting them.
Well, I tried indeed. I would not recommend it.
Yeah.
Bring the weed from the shaft.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
Heavy lifting.
I agree. We may be in a circumstance where we need to dig through some more shaft.
I use the tree branch if we, if I think one that you pay to look at it for and get probably better results.
Well, they, they refined, uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. You have. Former colleagues in the business, see if they know if he was looking for a job.
So moving on, discuss the posting and sele, selection process for A D A coordinator. This is just to get it out there, we do not have an A D A coordinator. In the past, it was our building inspector, but apparently when our building inspector was hired, which was around the summer of twenty twenty, it was not on the table, it came to see.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, he was not appointed as the A D A coordinator. So we have no A D A coordinator in town currently. We also have no A D A transition plan. Um, so we don't have that either. We have applied through M R P C for the past two years to, for a grant to write the plan and we were denied both times. We have also, we have a posting up for a commission on disability and that we have never received a volunteer response for that. Um, it was, we posted at least twice since I've been selectmen. We also put an ad in the, um, senior center newsletter, uh, trying to recruit for that and not get any response. So I just want to put that out there, that's something we should be thinking about, we need that. And we also need an A D A coordinator.
Um, might I suggest that we send a letter or a memo out to the existing boards and committees? I do know that there is a, a couple, um, that do have new members, um, that could be qualified for this type of position.
Okay. As A D A coordinator or for the commission on disability?
As A D A coordinator.
I don't know what the rules are.
I've served as the A D A coordinator for more for the past five years, so I don't think that there are any set in stone guidelines. Um, you, you're supposed to have a familiarity with the A D A. And there's, obviously the A D A transition plan, like, you know, it would lay out the, one of the things that most of the transition plans, we created one when I was the law. Um, and the vendor that we hired created the process for filing a grievance and the guidelines for the A D A coordinator position.
Okay, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
ADA inventory. Check which buildings are accessible or size opposed to where they're not supposed to. When you have the inventory complete, then you do the transition plan, which is basically a corrective plan to implement, but then you have to speak.
I think that falls under the other rule. Madam Chair?
Yes.
For the ADA coordinator, could that fall under our new community service as part of diversity and inclusion?
I wouldn't put it there.
I wouldn't either. That'd be, that's more of a like a building department type position.
It's weird, just to show about. Typically, typically speaking, the two places that I've seen the ADA coordinators come from are either from the building department or from the health department.
Or from planning, or from, there's a couple of individuals that are on other boards that have the knowledge, is what I'm saying. Some retired, some are currently working.
Okay, so maybe we need a house.
That's, or, right.
Maybe talk to building on board a half. All right, that's that one. The RFP for the soccer fields. I see James Gates is on and was on, and this is probably why he's been waiting for all this time. And I do not have that on. I have this done. So I guess I would, James, are you on there? Can you speak?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Would you be willing to work with me on the RFP for the soccer fields?
Of course.
Okay.
So I, we can move to, to put it on another agenda?
We can, but let me get a date from James. When are you generally available? Are evenings better or daytime?
I can be flexible. You know, evenings are good also. But overall, I can be flexible.
Okay, how about if I send you an email and we set?
Okay.
All right, I'll let you know when I'm available over the next couple of weeks, and we need to get this done.
All right, since we're here, should we extend, or did you already extend the lease another month?
Yes, let's extend the lease. I don't have the date. Is it, it was like June something, right? June 8th?
Yeah, I think, I don't remember exactly what day you did it to last time we met. But whatever you think is acceptable with a little wiggle room because you need that RFP out for what, 30 days?
Something like that.
So we're looking at September.
So let's extend it through August, August 30th.
Okay.
31.
August 31st. So it's our motion to extend the lease with TESA for Sklar and Cook Meadows through August 31st, 2022.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
You're a second, okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Teresa Moshi, yes?
Sussex Sanderanian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes? And Sabrina, I'm going to need to, we sent you an extension, correct? Of the lease, did you get one from either Misty or Katie? James, do you know?
No, I never did, no.
Okay, I'll check. I know that that was in the works, so I'll work with Sabrina to get the extension, and we will need to sign that and get it to TESA. So you have that, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, James. Thanks for hanging in there.
No problem. Have a great night.
You too.
You too, James.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. All right, 4.9 is considered a red department.
Madam Chair, I'm just saying, do you want to move 4.8? Do you want to add another date?
To review the RFP?
The RFP.
Yeah, let's, let's put that on June 7th. Besides my time, yeah, thank you. James already gone away, but I'll send him here. I'm not going to know, but we have to do this between now and June 7th to get it toasted. And then.
And then, yeah.
All right. The two things, 4.9 and 4.10, they are both requests for extensions to the revolving fund. And I have one there.
Will there adjustments?
Do we have hard copy of the fire department last week? Probably. Oh, it was in here. Yeah, I think you were able to. Yes, thank you. I don't see it, but I might have them together. Well, anyways, they're here. All right, so what this is, is the revolving funds are set at Town Meeting with an amount that they, that each department is allowed to extend. So the recreation department is requesting an extension of an increase of $12,000 for theirs. And the amount that's in the revolving account right now is $21,907.31. But there are also revenues that have not yet been posted of $9,747.200. So they want the ability, and they're bringing in revenues now. So they want the ability to extend more than the $52,000 they asked for. And if I understood Terry right, there's only a certain amount left that they can use of the $52,000 unless we do this extension.
Correct.
So.
Well, adjustment? Or extension?
Yeah, increase.
Right.
Increase of $12,000. So that's what they're requesting. And this requires a signature of a vote of the board of selectmen and a vote of the finance committee, so we are voting. And then we're. So looking at this form, should we vote yes? If we put it today, we would authorize them to extend $64,000 as opposed to just $52,000 and a signature.
So, Madam Chair? So is this a one time? Are we saying just for a certain period of time? They can have the additional money, but then they have to make it, put it back?
It's money that the revolving account is set up with funds that come from other sources other than taxes and the other ways that we get revenue.
So this is.
So it comes from receipts.
Right, programs that they have, et cetera. But we, the so expectation is that next year their revolving account is increased to $52,000.
That was Terry's recommendation. She said, we really should look at all of these revolving funds and increase the amount because they've been saying year after year after year after year, even though program has increased.
So that was my next question.
Coming in and they're extending more.
So do we have a a check in balances of, you know, what are the programs taking in, et cetera? At this point.
We're down here.
Okay, thank you.
So in other words, they have the funds coming in. It just has, they just have to increase the amount that they're allowed to spend.
Funds are coming in from the programs they're offering.
Correct.
We need to make a note in preparation for budget for next year.
That's, that's the big thing. So the, instead of $52,000, it should be $64,000, what you're saying. I agree there.
We might want to make it seven year.
Right.
Depending on what programs.
Right.
We should have good numbers going into next year, what they brought in this year based on that. And that's what I'm trying to understand, make sure I understand. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to increase the fiscal year '22 revolving fund for the recreation department by $12,000.
Second.
All those in favor? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Teresa Moshi, yes?
Sussex Sanderanian, yes.
And then, so I am going to sign this. And Sabrina will be right in here for you. And then the same thing for the fire department, the one you gave me yours, so you don't have any further chance.
No, but I can.
It's the same thing. There's a column in the on the paper. It says four zeros, zero, 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 four zeros, I think it should be 40,000. Amount approved for extension at Town Meeting, I think it's 40,000. There's a zero in the wrong place, one or the other. Amount requested to be increased is by 6,500. The amount that's in the revolving account is 70,900. So it's the same thing. This comes from ambulance receipts.
So, Madam Chair, from that ambulance receipt, I would assume those are less there's a decreased ability to lock those down. I would assume those were with COVID?
Yes. We request here is to replace our 50,000 computer monitors. The most of the firewall systems, the new computer will be installed with Patriot communication.
So I certainly don't have a problem with the funds for just fiscal year '22, but this one I'd be a little more reluctant to continue on unless we see the same type of use of the ambulance, increase in ambulance response because hopefully the pandemic's over and we see it decrease. But from what I've told, it's not, so not especially in Washington.
I think that's a question for when we prepare for that.
Yeah, but I also will say that this is for the communication center that's moving over, and I think it was not anticipated that the current computer that is where, is in the other communication center, it wasn't part of their, I don't think it was in their forecasting that that computer needed to be replaced and moving the communication center over to Deppel.
I understand.
Yeah.
So I died.
Chair? I believe the money that the fire department wants to take from the revolving fund is from fire alarms and the like. It's not from ambulance receipts. You know, we vote that revolving fund article at Town Meeting, and the last side of it is the amount that they want to take out of the revolving fund. And that's why he needs more because he got this project that was needed and, and he's taking it from there. And that's what Terry told me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have a motion. The motion is to increase the amount in the revolving fund by 6,500.
So moved.
Is there a second?
All right, all those in favor?
Teresa Moshi, yes?
Sussex Sanderanian, yes. In her mind, and I'm still waiting for the load. I gotta talk to the IT guy because this is really slow tonight.
All right, ARPA projects, I don't have, oh, I think I put in the share for the fourth. Is there anything in there?
I'm loading it, but I can't see it.
Yeah, well.
Move on to our executive session.
Yeah, I think it's time. ARPA projects, let's just go over that next meeting. Any updates or reports that we need to know about, that we don't know about actually?
Just, just the liaison report, I'm sorry.
Now to liaison reports?
Just I continue to be meeting with the departments and the liaison.
I actually have been very busy between planning and water and recreation and North Metal Sacks and you name it. I don't have, I am continuing to do the work that the board has tasked me to, and when I have formal report, I'll bring it forward.
Same with me.
Same with me.
Analysis of communications. We have one thing on the Memorial Day celebration, and I will put this on the website. Are we going to read that? Go ahead.
This is from Betty May Tenney, who has put together the Memorial Day festivities. Memorial Day will be observed in Townsend on Sunday, May 29th. Members of Townsend VFW Post 6538 and its auxiliary, American Legion Post Number 199 and its auxiliary, and DAV Chapter 122 will attend the 10:00 AM service at the New Beginnings United Methodist Church as a body. Two parades and a band concert will take place in the afternoon. All marching units will assemble at the FW Park in West Townsend at 1:00. There is going to be several stops. There's going to be flowers in regards to the Canal Street Bridge. The parade will go to the cemeteries as well. There's going to be services with pastor and reverends. They're going to be leaving the cemetery and moving down to Highland Street, to Brookline Street, to the Townsend Common, where they'll have Memorial Day observances. The Townsend Military Band will present a concert at the bandstand on the Common beginning approximately 15 minutes after the parade's conclusion. Patriotic music and the songs of various military branches will be performed by the Townsend Military Band, and it concludes its Memorial Day concert at approximately 5:00 PM by playing Star Spangled Banner. The Townsend Memorial Day observances will be held rain or shine, and it's hoped that many area residents will come out to watch the ceremonies. I want to thank Betty May for all her hard work and all the members of the band, and I hope to see everybody there.
All right, thank you. I have no other announcements. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May 31st at 6:00 PM, followed by Tuesday, June 7th at 6:00 PM, so that will be two weeks in a row. And then, is there a motion to review and sign payroll and bill of warrants out of session? Well, yeah, out of session.
I make a motion to review and sign payroll and bill of warrants out of session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sussex Sanderanian, yes?
All right, so with that, is there a motion to move into executive session? We actually have three possible executive sessions and
You want me to do those motions?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. Madam Chair, I have three executive sessions, and if I may read the motions all at the same time. Yes, it does.
And we go adjourned from executive session, revised 517 to 22.
First executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares regarding eviction action at apartment 220 Country Estates. eviction action at apartment 220 Country Estates. Then an executive session pursuant to General Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the fire chief. And then executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the police chief. And to adjourn an executive session.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Teresa Malas, yes?
Justice Exnderanian, yes.
All right, and with that, we are moving to executive session. We'd like to.